What would it like to be called?
Financial boarding?
Financial. Right, so the agenda writing is now the context of the structure. Got questions?
Two questions. One, the invoices paid.
Which one you looking at?
Paid. About three quarters of the way down, there was TG Systems. Last page. Yes, last page, sorry. There was a £450 transfer computer from one place to another. It appears, which seems unusual. Just one more question. £111 page.
Firstly, Sage has opened financial year, printed on Windows XP and all. We may have got Windows XP in town council office. So we had to transfer a computer from this centre to the office. So Sage can run it. So we'll be transferring it on the third day.
So that's not just physically carrying a PC.
I thought it would be something.
It would be something. But it seemed a big number to carry a PC across that.
Yeah, actually, it's about £500.
Oh, the date transfer, I get.
Yeah.
It's not just copying the file. Any other queries?
So I'm not even going to know.
The allotment made in progress.
Oh yes.
Is that what they have been completed through our satisfaction?
I see it was.
Thank you for the praise. I do what they say we're going to do.
Why don't you try?
I did go up there and check if one was looking. And not come.
Has it been done?
And never been paid.
No. It hasn't been done?
No.
Okay.
That's the first quote, not the second quote.
Are we sure about this?
The second quote, they were actually quoting to carry out work that they should have done in the first quote. And I've got photographs in it.
And have they done the work for the second quote?
No, because it hasn't been agreed.
They're not doing the second quote? Second, second. Right. So we've made an invoice and haven't had the work done. Can I pose, please suspend standing orders? Do you mind? The council agree? Okay, maybe it says, but he's been looking for the words.
I visited the site with the Maidencroft form and was happy that they'd done the work on the original quote. I asked him what any remaining or outstanding works needed to be done to make the site secure. Because it was used as dumping ground by people who lived on Pier 11. Also, fighting the people that drive in in the access at the end of Lion's Road. There was no delay or anything like that. And he gave us a second quote for work to completely clear one middle part of the site. Which contains a lot of metal and stuff like that. And also to erect a fence and gate.
And was that?
And that was rejected by the council on the grounds of excessive cost.
I remember that. So the disconnect here, the more we don't think it's done than we think it was done. Is that the extra work? The extra clearance?
Yes, that was, yes.
And that wasn't, do you think it was on the original quote?
No.
You know what? Again, if it's been accepted on behalf of the council, I don't think we've got much scope about that challenge. Right, we're wrong, we're whatever. But if it's been accepted?
Yeah, I wish it was.
Difficult one for us to argue. Unless it's mine?
Yes, it's mine.
Their argument was that they couldn't clear everything from the site. Because a lot of the, well, a lot of the stuff that needed to be disposed of was owned, clearly owned by residents around Pier 11. And they would all have to be written to by the council requesting that they had an opportunity to move, to move theirself. There's quite a bit of it, sort of extensions to gardens where they've gone through fences and stuff like that. And that obviously we never got around to doing it, given that.
And what, if I may ask, how, do you know where it's left? So we've still got the second task that hasn't been completed.
Well, there's still rubbish up there. I know the grounds, well, the two grounds for them cleared some of it. But Maidencroft won't have any further involvement with it unless there's a further agreement with the new work.
Okay, so we need to go back under standing orders? Thank you very much. Right, so the standing orders, thank you for your presence.
If they couldn't do, finish, do all the work that they could for, because of these people? Does that mean that they, that we didn't pay for all the work that they said they would do?
How much was this invoice? Okay, there's clear evidence of the hell we've fulfilled with this. What's the appetite of this council? What do we want to do? It's not moving the site.
I suggest that we use the characterism. In the first instance, we need to go up there and all of us, we're all just here. Not only the allotments, but the central area. So we know what we're, or, I think we should go up there.
That's a very good idea. Could you think of what we do next Tuesday? Since we've got a meeting in our diary, so we can, if we want to, go look for them. I think it's a great idea. So the cemetery is going to be our allotment. Those that can, you know, will just, huh?
The white horse.
The white horse. Yeah, my submarine here up at the Blue Lovers.
Just in terms of agenda, I appreciate that there is some script about this actual work. But it was my lot by, for Jen.
I think it's contested.
But this is a payment. I think we cannot question the financial transaction of this meeting. We can only open it to the supplier and say, hang on a minute, we've paid to build, can we do this page? Can we revisit this? As far as eleven A is concerned, we need to sign this. Very exciting, it's going.
One question to you, on eleven B. Additional inscription on a metal chain, £16.99. I think a pre-typed genome. What's the score of that?
They probably spelt it wrong.
Mixed on there. That's the former chairman.
So you have a whole chain there?
Yeah.
Really?
All the, all the names of the previous chairman. Starting with you, Harrow Provo, there's Archer on there. You are.
Oh, that's cool. That's, that's, that's cool.
So, and the day.
Okay. Are we on eleven B? I think, eleven A is out of control. Any other issues on eleven A? On eleven B.
Just a quick question on eleven A. In terms of the money earmarked for neighbourhoods trying to steal it, the £1500 happens.
Oh, yes.
Where's that theory in eleven B in terms of getting, that's earmarked budget for it?
I think it's coming out of.
It's coming out of reserves.
Yes.
Okay. There's nothing of any payments or invoices on the net, maybe. So something, I've got a special code or?
What I expect to see is sort of a current annual budget of £1500, for example. And a line of expenditure on net. We've got a short trading account, so we know what, what we've actually spent and what we've got to spend.
Could be a budget line of £1500 because it's agreed to come out of reserves.
So it comes out of reserves, it goes into our expenditure cut.
Yeah, which hasn't, hasn't shared yet, has come to make any payments until that. Here on 101, I see the line. And in fact, I have actually started to spreadsheet to see what that goes.
Great.
I'll be back for June, beginning of April.
And do?
Just a very naive question. The amount of amounts for audit fees, external and internal?
The audit fees, external and internal, they're minus figures because they've been earmarked from, for 2014, 15. They're audit fees and come back financial year. But they've been earmarked to be paid for in this financial year.
So it's a big clue. That's how, that's how the system works, changing through the shares.
Eleven B? Eleven C? Better cash, better carry on? Eleven B? Cash for April? Eleven C? Who are we, eleven A? Come on, Helen.
They're lasting video.
That's H Charles here.
No, so eleven A is approved quote. No, I've just been handed it here. It's approved quotation for £700 plus the 18. £100, I guess. To uplay five existing lighting columns in Aldo Place. This is a recommendation from the environment committee to amend.
I'm just asking for free quotes for the things that have worked and studied, tested and priced.
No, it's from our street light contractor.
Only one here.
It was all, it all was raised when a resident in Aldo Place complained that it's too dark near and there. And they wanted a new lamp. The cost of the new lamp, it's just fractionally less.
£2600.
Less than upgrading all five to white lights.
So these are LEDs, they're thirty six plan, thirty six to off, P and L low energy. So the Christmas colour range here is the whole. So this is a recommendation from the committee. How we explain this?
A recommendation, we accept that.
Your recommendation, we accept recommendation.
I've just put out the lighting maintenance. The whole of the year is £2000.
Any committed statements, or we've just gone down as a nominee?
Okay, just, it's when, in fact, one of these lamps, not close, it's actually being replaced anyway. So we have to do one to give it a day as it is. But yeah, I mean, the maintenance, which is, which is very last year. Actually, I, I was spent last year by £170, just £2600. Just by replacing the buttons that, you know, needed to be repaired. I think it's, it's been discussed about some point, maybe CVC may have moved the lights. And so I think if you look at that, we just need to keep the lights well maintained and it would be possible to be given up to go about that budget anyway to do so. Because I broke it down, it's a bit off the MSA.
Yeah, I, I think that was a quite welcome development, previous council.
We've got to be prepared that we are going to spend, we're money on reverse to get, get in that position.
Okay.
I just seem to remember, there was a question maybe at the last council meeting about whether, maybe committee members asked, whether the new lamps conform with CBC's, regulate, or CBC's, you know, what CBC could adopt. And I think, yeah, I think we've got to, we know if that.
What's the, I mean, if there's a lamp not working, we need to fit two of those.
I think the question is, it's not just a repair, it's an upgrade. So it has to be upgraded to the latest, actually. I think we can, we can ask the contractor to give us that assurance.
Yeah.
I think if we feel like you can sign off today, with the assurance, the contractor will work with the review.
I'm actually need to be aware of that.
So is that, is that what we're saying? That's exactly quite consistent with contract insurance, it's based, would want to adopt this solution.
That's all that's worth, so.
Second, oh. Okay, all four? So we go back to the supplier and just say? Confirm the technicians who will do it. We don't need to see, if we, if we get that assurance, we don't need to see them doing that. So it only comes back to this amount? Okay?
Yep.
Yeah? We see the invoice, yes. So F is payments for the crafts session? Is there a general?
Okay.
I'd like to try to detail to the who is, and ring that's the resident who we have. We have lost, uh, uh, contact. And I think the assumption that we have moved by new ones and keep them for ourselves and that gives them a good, a good option.
Is there any issue with the council doing that? Well, let's, so first of all, it's a very legal thing to be.
You can't.
Maybe stop the steel.
You have not, as you say, it's not coming as a financial system.
So what budget was this going to come out of at any moment? To stop the steel frame out of the same project.
It's very likely to happen. They've got seen it before, so.
Financial guys, I'd like that.
I love seeing the community equipment, so this equipment is a very large budget, £500.
How much do you think?
Just look. £1100.
Is that £1700? That we've gone actually forward to buying the paper, is that what the residents, yeah?
It's the price to buy. Was it? It was, it's up, it's what?
I think this is hugely embarrassing, you know, Philip Capes has been put in a position that we suggest, even suggest that it's enough. The sooner we pay for the money and give our apologies to the business, then that's it.
So all we need to do then is determine what, what budget is going to come out of this. Reserves? Finance council, reserves?
I think if the finance, yeah, reserves. I think if we expand the role of the working party financial reporting, working. So we have reserves as well, at the same time, because we've had a lot of conversations about what gets from reserves. I'm not exactly sure that it's in reserves right now. So I think the working party will put that as well, and then the other.
Until then?
Yeah, happens, happens in reserves.
So at the, at the end of the year?
Can we make sure that we let it go to the market?
I. Oh no, sorry, due, due to the limited seat.
That's another condition.
Approved quotation for £474 plus eighteen for replacement seat along the road. As recommended by the GPM Finance Committee in April. Have you, have you got a budget for this?
£300, £300 budget.
Okay.
With a 10% of seats.
So the, the GPM Finance Committee, I don't know if this could play, is replacing a flat bench seat? Been there for a long time.
Because we have, this is one, and we, we have.
Three hundred or forty? I don't know. I remember the discussion, and this, this seat has been, or what's been replaced has been a mess for a long time.
It's, we've got quite a few seats, I don't remember the exact number, but the lot of the maintenance. And then checked and regulated, and this has been one recommended, needed replacement, and we see, yeah, just a painting.
Okay, next change, does it? No.
On the other, I also seem to remember that, I think it was Mr. Parker, raised last month about a seat that used to be somewhere, disappeared or.
Due to the.
That is actually due to come onto the next agenda, whether the committee or town council, because someone has wanted to hire a seat to go up. Generally, yes. And that is, yeah, it's not proven, but I will go on this.
Could the three board chapters, if you're this, now, not through that, and we see it. Very cheap looking, even though they're cheap, wooden ones. I did put people to their office a couple of years ago, had to look at London, recycled seats, like in the dump, held apart from London. They can't be burnt, they can't be carved, they don't need painting. They feel they've spent more money, but they'd be worth looking into. Long term, you can save a lot of money. Instead of the cheaper wooden ones, these painted, etc.
Well, it's a steel seat, this one.
No, that's still needs painting, I probably don't, but whereas the recycled ones, no. They don't need any management whatsoever.
Okay, right, then we need to propose, what are we going to do? Is that a question?
Not explicitly, don't go along with this, have the money, and so we can discuss the report.
Nice. Does the existing seat in its current condition pose any threat to self-safety or survival? I know the secret question, but I don't know whether it poses a risk.
I don't, no, I don't, I'm sorry, I can't remember. I wasn't aware of that.
I'd be surprised if there is, it's a lot of the payments on the energy are to it, somewhere to it.
So, so I'm keen, but we don't have open ended, not actually know what's happening where. So there's proposals that we, we part this, but can we tighten it up so we know what we're actually going to do about it? Not just, not all right.
Can I firstly, up this moment as you turn it, and look into all our seats, long term, and what is best value for the future?
I'm afraid another working party come up.
When we come up to that, then we can decide. I wrote it, because there's no, there's no forward planning on budgets to allow so many seats every time of the year.
I, I, I think, I think there's an opportunity here to actually look at all our assets. Lighting, seating, bus shelters, dustbins, everything, playground, well, on top of the playground, we're pretty much, I can share all of this, last council sorted that out. But rather than this disparate handoff, just do this, I don't want to watch me, I was going to look at that, why don't take a, a review of our assets, a sleep foundation, everything, if it's so right. So what we've got to do, is how much we need, is the timeframe we can do it, prioritize it, fix the dangerous stuff, you know, just have a partner, ongoing makes us great. Who wants to be on the working party to do that? Well done. You, you went through your finger.
I was.
Oh, are you? I'm sorry, funny, last week I was kidding.
The only advisor is, we have a lot of assets, I think we need to say at the moment it's straight up the trust assets. The whole of the allotment, the whole of the cemetery, the whole of the wall, all the whole.
Well, we don't have to do it all at once, no. You can just do it.
It could be on the next meeting.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure. I, I would like to know state information.
You look, you look, okay, full notice of relation, but we're doing part seats first.
I actually don't think it, it's not going to each of us, and this has got to be done. I suggested only one of their visiting, so it may does for me, if the rest of the paper. Did you know? I've never been in that movie before.
It's an asset confirmation, what we've got.
Right, we have, right, okay, move forward, clean the timeline here. So what was the resolution? So not buying this, we're going to review just the seats?
Streets, we did streets by shelters.
Yeah.
Street manager, okay. And, and you guys are going to own that property?
Yeah.
So anyone else want to be involved in that?
You, who, you mentioned, we should.
So you would like to be involved in this? I'm hearing you are.
If you actually be late, I'll start the research, I think, so we should, we know.
When we get some more, we can answer.
So do we need a third person in this?
No, 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 we're just asking a basic question. Do we actually need?
And do you want this as well? Sorry, but do you want this? Right.
Do we need service? I mean, a couple of them are situated near that shop, it's where it draws up that service.
So that's a fourth person, I think. Very good question, but I think you'll enjoy looking into.
Yeah, I think we do need some seats, but if we realise, yes. If we realise we have three hundred seats, we're working on the same direction, you can have your seats. If we realise we only have four left.
What does he say? That, that's the long deal. If we realise we only have four left, what does he say? That's the no deal. So working party please. So again, in two weeks' time, let us know when you'd be able to report back. Is that all right? Yeah, cool, good. We don't have real hate yet. Get prime, do you have this one, Theo? So we deferred, so is this a new? So the question was whether we should move to a fixed term contract time. We have the carrot that's central press to take over our lighting and things, and the government lights are going to happen in the timeframe. So unless people suggest a contract, I think we can save money down on this fixed term contract.
I have a fund like to stay in the margin of the change.
So what are we saying here? We're going to go back and start talking some about it? Okay, so I think basically, we're going to assume that central press are going to inherit these lights in the short term. So we can carry on negotiating.
And what proposal with alternative rates as soon as possible? That's what we need to decide on in the upcoming weeks or something, or something is.
So yes, we will, we will offer a fixed term contract, so yes, we need to know the benefits. Yes, sorry.
Duke, what's the duration of the fixed term contract?
That's what we need to find out. So the terms and conditions and costs.
Having read this for us on, we're already on the higher rate now, is that correct?
Twenty-five per cent increase, so time is obvious.
I think we can get out, I mean, yes, in terms of two months. Okay, well, CCTV, receive a report from me.
Chair of mine.
Oh, sorry, accounts, I mean. Approved accounts to be paid, fine. That's this one, I have it noted. It's in your tray. Any questions, Detective?
I guess one question, which might help if you remember someone. Because when I was last in council, I was confused as to whether we're approving something that is already being paid or whether we're approving, go ahead and pay. Yeah, that process is, I'm still unsure in terms of software. That's the usual.
It says pay as in past tense.
Is that optimum practice to do that? Prove things after you do that.
If anyone is actually can approve it, need it. I can sign. Do you have the else?
No, I don't.
You've already agreed to email the buyer or to find out if that can be. If we authorize the payment, then the mandate still exists. So if we authorize payment, then you can find another mandate hold to that check. Yeah, I guess my concern is pre-act activity in time from a longer view. Has any of these payments actually been labelled? If they have, then. Okay, so that's the question. So apart from the directive, is there anything else that gets to be paid, so we are?
So we need a policy decision whether we make arrangements in advance of any council approval for those transactions.
Don't, yeah, I mean, that seems to be best practice in my view, but I'm not actually.
I think we should have a policy that we don't pay if the council approval, subject to some exceptions. And we can list what those exceptions are in our financial regulations. And what is council approved?
They are, they are. They are active, but the amount can pay. No, no, the point on it is, so it's more emergency. Some of the deposits and stuff is out as well. Now, that's what we need.
So that means we would have to go to our client, so you want to pay until second week in on.
Usually, except for markets.
Oh, mind you, sorry, if I ask, is it usually the twenty? All right, because it's usually the first Tuesday, so there would be a time to do that. You're saying they should be approved before council?
We're forced to say if we disagree.
But committee meetings under delegated authorities, so they shouldn't.
This is point before, with the actual agencies. But if we disagree with any of this expenditure, for example, changed the £2,900 expenditure early on. We're helpless to do it, because previous being agreed was the money's well thought. So I think this expenditure rising needs approval from council before you actually release the payment. Does your process allow this?
Would you why not have any council meetings to this purpose? Basically, I think suppliers can be not paid on the, not salaries can be paid on the.
Well, that's, that's where we need, it's the exceptions, so there's be exceptions too, and that's what we need to hear.
If we want to change payment date to, on the date of a town council meeting, that's fine with suppliers. But it wouldn't be fine with the staff, so.
Yeah, but that's where you would be exceptions. And I think that's good practice.
So just to summarise, what we're saying is the first Tuesday of the month where this full council will accept the non-exemptional payments. And that gives you worst case, a week, the last Tuesday, sixth. And then the two, to the twentieth, will be twenty.
The payments can be released the day after the council meeting. It just had to be the twentieth, because that's the next day after Tuesday.
But then that means whoever's on the bank, the bank they will have to make themselves available at least twice a month. Once with town council payments and once with salaries.
I think the paperwork can be prepared in advance, but the physical cheque does not get released until council approved. All paperwork can be ready, ready to go until this council decision, that'd be my view.
Okay, so decision is, this is going to come to all council now. You're going to work on exceptional, agree the exceptional items?
So I still won't have one day of checks going out.
Well, yeah, once the council has actually proved the expenditure, we're meeting twice, twice a month and a half as the full council, so we put it twice.
Then one persists forever.
Yeah, but then what we need to do is make sure the new arrangements, delegates, if you do have committees, delegates, the power for those things to be approved.
Or you, as council owner mentioned last night, for an hour and ten minute.
Yes.
Council meeting.
In a review, yeah, in a review of the, when we review the committees, you know, have a technique where they have full council, let's say the first Tuesday, and then the third Tuesday they have committees. We have thirty minutes full council, just so they can accept an action, you cannot say that was committed. And the rule will be on the back of that committee anyway, so it's not. It's something to consider when we review that. Yes, you're very close.
Sorry, I'm curious, but we need to say the wage factor, because I'm not familiar with it. I'll wait just a bit for that. Seems nearby the danger. I think I, I did read, I think they approved all the things, which is the synergy thing. And they are working on a system at the moment to be able to enable, I think, for town councils and that, to be able to pay. I don't know where I read that, I did read something about it, that they are.
Longer term, we should pay for electronic payment. Unreliable to, we have to have us doing that.
Well, according to what I read, I don't think we have the money.
We might have the facilities one after the other.
I don't think we have the authority to do that.
I thought I read some article about a year ago saying councils can do it.
Oh, I bet. I bet they would say, right, I think it is a bit of a thing to do.
Can maybe, what I've heard is there's two stages for change coming on. We just carry it, particularly for Lesley, what it is we've agreed to do, make sure Lesley's comfortable.
I do appreciate it. So Gersh, we want, pray see what you think's happening.
Okay, so what council award said, which I agree with, expenditure should not be, a payment should not be released to suppliers until council approves that, subject to any exceptions we agree in review, for example, salaries, direct debts, etc. And I'll agree that list with Lesley if we give the powers to do that, in the short term, but then come back to the council decision. Whilst we're meeting as a full council twice a month, I think we can do that. I think that's going to work for Lesley. When we review our committee structure, we need to build into that process, delegate for that second meeting of the month for those financial transactions to sign off. Those financial, most payments that are approved by that council meeting can be released the following day, after that meeting. And the paperwork, the cheques can be physically signed prior to the council meeting, but not released. Do you want me to email that?
Yeah, I mean, that is what happens, it has been happening anyway.
So in there was a motion that we agree that Gersh, like in Lesley, is going to work out that subset, but it's accepted from items that will be triggered without clearance by the council.
Because we've approved the budget, so for salaries, the budget's already been approved, so we can just go against that.
There's no shocks, no surprises. So that's, I'll second that motion. Anyone for, anyone against it? Who's for that? Anyone against it? Okay, so that, that motion's been carried. There is a ongoing review, I think it's patent, but we're trying to have a look at it. Right. Accounts payment happy? Apart from that, anything else? Moving on. CCTV, do a report from myself. Regarding CCTV cameras. And I didn't realise, I picked up an action here, I thought it was another councilman, councilwoman. What I'd like to do is, I've been looking at street CCTV there for hours. Myself working with capital and, and AMP and our cameras. So I would like to pose and put together a small working party to bring on thought to this council and what's, what costs and conditions come with installing CCTV. And in that also, that we make sure that we conform, conform to our existing CCTV. Not going to project, so I can spell another working party coming on. So if there's an appetite for that, what proposals we put to get the working parties to look at CCTV?
Is it a high level interest in the community on this sort of subject, or that, or do you want to embrace this stage or?
Well, I, if it's working parties, then we can invite people from, even if we are residents, to be part of that. I wouldn't be the first to, there isn't actually that much to do, just a bit of property. But what we need to determine versus cost, because we've got the check. And there's a little bit of work to be done to determine the exact price, the costs are coming down. Now that we've got this, all back going through the village, it would seem to save an awful lot of costs that I thought we would be curbing last year. Surprisingly, that amount as well. So my proposal is we should put together a working party to look into the feasibility of CCTV. Do we vote on this then? Who thinks that's a good idea?
That is a good idea, I like it. For the work first, or the last day, on the basis of prices.
Well, I, tell me if I'm wrong, but I believe we need to agree that we're going to look at working parties and go off and do the work. Is that a point? We think the idea has no value in substance, and I'm not looking into it.
Yeah, no, I believe that's right.
Right.
I suppose this army might, are we in danger of stretching ourselves too much to some, just an open question, I wonder whether.
We have a lot of working parties, is that what you're saying?
Well, perhaps, I mean, we'll talk about priorities as well, but I just wonder whether we're going to bite up on the Jews at this stage.
Well, I'm asking if there's an appetite, if there isn't, then it's fine, we can wait, bring it back. And we've got all the time. So there isn't an appetite for it, that's fine, I'm not going to be upset if he did.
Well, I guess what I do is.
No, I'm not going to be upset, it's okay.
If there's people that want, people in need, there are councillors that want to do it, and they'll have the time to do it. Then I don't think we should stop them doing it, we don't have to make any decisions in any council meeting for the next few months if we don't. But it doesn't stop people doing working paper. And if, you know, in the same way, if there are residents who want to get involved, then less, that get involved. If it makes them feel engaged in what the council are doing.
I sense there is an appetite to do that, so maybe review it in three months' time, once we've got the structure, the infrastructure for this council, the committee's going to place, maybe four months. It's come back on the agenda in September. Is that all right? Item thirteen, health promotion presentation board. Anything else?